Meeting to order of December 13th. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will open it up to public comment.
Hi there. Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Margaret O'Connor, or Meg O'Connor, from 24 Forest Drive.
Okay.
I'm a parent of a child here in the district. And I have nothing written down, so this should go well. I just wanted to show up tonight, first off, and to say thank you to all of you for your service. I've been watching the meetings, and I know the hard work that goes into. I can see the effort, the hard work, the conversations. All of that is not taken lightly. As a parent here of a student in the district, I say the same for our, we see our administrators, the same for our teachers. So when I speak tonight, I'm speaking in my role of a parent, and I'll tell you, I'm coming almost disappointed. And I've been noticing a pattern of dismissiveness, almost, or lack of compassion, when it comes specifically to the area of special education. And I know these decisions, as far as budget cuts, are real. And those budget cuts you had to make were real. And so the meat of my, the point of my talking is not about the meat of your decisions. It was the tone of how it went about. Back in May, you also had an issue regarding your special education program and about evaluations. And I understand that was rectified, but when I tell you, I watched those meetings, and I couldn't figure out the outside stakeholders. Now, I knew behind the scenes, we're talking about an outside stakeholder who had, took issue with the dismissive tone of how programs were being passed on to families and children here in our district. But I couldn't figure out, because nobody read the letter, when an outside stakeholder wanted to correct what was being said here at this meeting. And none of you, or anybody I didn't see, asked to read the letter, wanted to read the letter to clarify it for all of us on the outside. I was able to chase down that, that letter, to make sure it was supposed to be added to the minutes, and eventually it was, and I read that. And then when I started reading the budget cut, or listening to the budget cut meetings, I was incredibly sad, as a parent, to hear about the numbers game, because it's not about the numbers. Money-wise, it's about the numbers, I understand that. You have children across the board, and a few of you advocated for those children in the sense that there are some students that can't even get to the starting line because of educational issues. So when we talk about this is not a private school, not a private district, you need to back the train up. Because we're not asking for a private school education. We're asking for respect, compassion. We have an ethical, and we also have a moral obligation to all students, but specifically those that are, have learning disabilities or learning struggles. To care for, to treat them with respect, in how we talk about them, how we do our programs. And I wasn't finding that, or I'm not finding that. And for myself, as a parent of a child, I just want to come on public record that that's how I feel. I'll tell you, Dr. Costa, you were outstanding in how you advocated for your administrators, as you should have been. They have given up a lot, and you wanted to make it for sure that everybody knew what you were cutting, and what they were cutting wasn't easy, and it was at a cost, and we didn't want to forget them. And we don't. You're all outstanding. I wish there was someone in that room that did the same thing for children in that special education program, and those educators that served them. Because they're taking a hit. I get emails late, late at night. We're not just talking about case managers in a classroom with a child. They work with parents, they work with other teachers, they work with, everybody works as a team. And when I tell you transparency gets really tough when you don't have enough employees to educate a child, and we're seeing that. I see that personally, and that's not a slam. I couldn't say enough, these educators cannot pedal fast enough in my own child's education. But I'm asking, as a board, I just wanted, again, to be on public knowledge that the lens that you're looking at, and you're discussing these special education programs, it's on high alert now. I think I'm advocating, I'm picking that role upon myself, for my own child, but also I hope all parents join together, so that voice is really strong. We understand those cuts need to be made, and we understand, but those decision-makers making, the decision-makers making those cuts with those lenses, not standing up to apologize for tone of voices, not reading stakeholder meetings, and having full transparency of, yeah, we're failing, we failed, we're going to clean this up fully. You create, you breed insecurity with parents. And as somebody who I consider, I consider myself a strong community member, I want the best for you, because that way my child will have the best. That's hard to do when there's lack of trust. So I just, again, wanted to make sure, for myself, made that clear, that I don't know if there's anything I can do with private conversations with you, if you're having them with actual case managers, if you see it in the trenches of the emails late at night, and the reports, and the talking, and the tools, it's, it's a beast. It's a heavy, heavy beast. And by God, it's not a private school, it's not, it doesn't have to be. It's a moral, ethical, and legal obligation that you have to these children, to our children. And so I just, again, want to make sure that that's put out there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Meg. Can you hear me? Megan Holbrook, Presidential Circle. I actually have a question, and I apologize if I missed it from another meeting, so I hope I'm not asking something you already talked about. But I do want to say thank you to Meg, because, for coming up here and speaking. I am a parent of an IEP student, so I understand the challenges. I am probably one of the most vocal parents regarding IEP services. I get thanked all the time by teachers for advocating for my child and to keep doing so. And I have to say, I don't know how many parents probably aren't doing that, and how many kids are missing their services, or not being given the same level of attention, because I'm a bit of a pit bull when it comes to that. And I went through struggles, and I went through challenges, and I'm sure if you talk to Ms. Henderson, or Mr. Sadler, or LDK, they will probably know me, because I'm the one having the meetings, and laying out expectations, and letting them know what wine are. So I appreciate Meg coming up here and just kind of mentioning the same thing, and, you know, I just, you know, just from a parent, from that standpoint. My question is, in respects to the Center School report cards, I just want to try to understand why we changed the grading system. We went from having an M and a, exceeding meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting, which is what Marston School still maintains, to having three underperforming metrics, and then just a meeting. So we got rid of the exceeding altogether. From my standpoint as a parent, it's a little disappointing to me. I feel like, it makes me wonder, are our K through 2 students, are they not prepared because of COVID in the last two years? Is that why we had to change them? I'm just curious as to know why we did it, what the metrics and the data is to support doing that, and why would we do it for one set of students in one school and not follow through, suit through the Marston School? It's just a little confusing from a parental standpoint, so. And if you already mentioned it, I apologize, I just didn't have time to go back through all the school board meetings, and I've had a couple of parents ask me the same questions, so I figured I'd just come up here and see if maybe you could comment again, if you already did, or if not, just kind of explain it for us. That would be great.
I think we should, yeah.
Mr. Lanham's coming up in just a minute. I'm sure he can answer that for you. Okay?
Yeah, I'm going to sit there.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Okay. Mr. Lanham. Yeah, yeah. You can speak to that, and, and your board report.
So the Center School report card has changed periodically to meet the, the needs of what's going on in the environment. There's been a lot of research about what's going on with standards-based reporting. At Center School, all three schools, I have a different structure of report card. I report at Center School, we report on, and the school board has given us the liberty to meet the needs of the learners, of the levels of the schools. We report on end-of-the-year standards and progress towards the end-of-the-year standard, and the expectation is meeting the standard. Standards are a pyramid. At the, at the primary level, there's hundreds of standards, whereas at the upper grades, there is not as many standards, and you have an opportunity to really push and expound upon a standard. Our goal is not so much every standard is reported out, we're just giving a snapshot of the power standards, of progress monitoring. We give opportunities to, to demonstrate mastery of a standard in multiple ways. Report card is not the only way. There is a, there is a comment section on the report card that could talk about how well a student is doing. There's an opportunity for a parent meeting to discuss how it's doing. So it's, the report card is just a progress monitoring thing. I believe at Marston School, they give progress updates throughout each trimester, as well as how they are doing, not at the end-of-the-year standard, it's how they're doing in that timeframe. So it's a larger discussion we need to have, as all three schools, of how reporting is done. At Hampton Academy, they don't have four things, I think they have seven or eight standards that they're using. But mastery is, is something that is not, the, below a mastery is not underperforming, it's the expected path of progress towards the end-of-the-year standard. Progressing, I believe you got the letter explaining that, Mrs. Holbrook? A letter went out prior to the report cards attached, saying what standards-based reporting is all about. Well, the re, again, at the lowest, lowest of grades, you don't really exceed a standard, you continually move through standards. So that's what we're talking about. We continually move through standards. We don't work on a standard for very long. In fact, some standards I haven't even been introduced until the second or third trimester. So it's an ongoing progression of standards that we continually flow through. So we don't stay on short vowels and exceed a short vowel standard, we move on to blends and diagrams and all these things. So we continually move across standards. We never utilize the term exceeding standard at a primary level, very, very rarely. It didn't, it didn't make sense, we didn't understand it. And not all schools in New Hampshire have exceeding standards, it's a 50-50 blend, some do, some don't. There's just lots of confusion of it. And as we switch into Alma, the teachers wanted multiple opportunities to determine if they're progressing towards a standard at the end of the year, because it's really an end-of-the-year report card at Center School. It's progress towards, it's progress monitoring, monitoring towards the end of the year. So that's just decisions we make at a leadership level. So I, I appreciate the, the feedback, but...
Well, it's one of the things, actually, that we're, we're looking at this year, as we continue to look at the curriculum, as we are articulating a language arts curriculum pre-K to grade 8, working with demonstrated success, to particularly look at the lessons and activities that support what it is we want children to know and be able to do at the end of each grade.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, at the end of each grade.
It's at the end of the year.
And that, that really was a statewide shift, to go towards either, whether you call them competencies or standards, but what is it that we want children to know and be able to do by the end of each grade level? So what, what happens is, the, the teachers are teaching towards the attainment of that level by the end of the, of the, of the grade, so that when they get to the following grade, they know where to begin. I think it's a conversation that's been had, that's going to be ongoing, truthfully. It's, it's just at the beginning of the work. In fact, we have not looked at the language arts curriculum in quite a while. If you think about our curriculum cycle, it has probably been about 10 years since we've really thought more deeply about language arts. So the work that was done last year was laying the foundations for the curriculum, and now we're looking specifically at the lessons, and the formative and summative assessments that we use to assess whether kids are attaining the, the knowledge to mastery of the competency. So we are continuing that work this year. In fact, that's going to be coming up in the board report later on, where the three principals are going to talk about that, in terms of what they're doing within their schools right now, as we're working through those curriculum standards. So there is going to be more conversations about it.
Absolutely. In the, in the past, 90% of the students would get, for the first two trimesters, a progressing towards the standard, and that progressing standard was way too wide. The range didn't give an accurate feedback to the parents as to a progression towards that end-of-the-year standard. So now they have progression, which is actually meeting the standard, meeting the end-of-the expectations, and beginning to progress. So it gives them multiple opportunities to see if they really are on target, or if they're not on target. So that's why we made that shift. And then the goal is M, to meet the standard at the end of the year. It's a philosophical thing. Multiple schools have different philosophies on that, and that's where we are right now. Questions?
Well, I was just wondering, can you understand where she might be, Ms. Holbrook? Is that it?
Yeah.
Can you understand where she might be thinking there were three underperforming metrics?
Yes.
Does that...
I don't see that as, in our field, we don't see it that way.
You didn't see it that way?
We don't, we, the whole school didn't see it that way, and I apologize if that's how it looked, but...
Okay. No, that, can you clarify what the, what they are, Tim?
So it's meeting the standard.
Yep.
Progressing, progressing towards the standard, beginning to progress, which is you're just, just understanding the standard, and what's being taught, and not yet had an opportunity to fully understand, and then, which is like a needs improvement. Right? So people have still some thoughts, at least when I went to school, that exceeding a standard is like an A. But it's not. My explanation letter says, meeting the standard is the A in the, of the, of what you need to do. So that's, that's how we're doing it.
So if people are confused...
They can call me.
They can call you.
Absolutely.
And have a conversation.
100% less, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do your board report now while you're up here?
I'd love to do my board report, sure. Yeah, why not? Let's, let's do that right now. Grades did close on December 2nd, so we did get that first trimester done, and report cards successfully went out yesterday. So I appreciate all the work that Tim Smith and Amber, and the whole technology department did in getting us ready, getting the staff ready, to prepare to enter grades on the report cards. That worked out really well this, this trimester, and I thought it was a little, much easier for parents to access report cards. So that went out really well. Prior to that, we had parent conferences, although they had an opportunity to meet with teachers, which, which, again, went very well. Myself and Mrs. Hayward and several staff members walked in the rain-soaked parade on December 3rd, still drying out from that event, but that was fun. It was fun to do the annual Hampton Parade. Grade 1 concert's coming up this week, I believe Thursday night at 6 o'clock, right here at Hampton Academy. We're going to do a practice, we're coming over on Thursday to do a rehearsal during the day, so we're excited about that. We have our second cohort of teachers working with New Hampshire Listens, that started today, so we're excited about that, to continue to work on our social-emotional learning. On December 21st, the high school band chorus is coming over to give a concert, they traditionally do that. We're really busy working the whole month of December. December is a long month, if you review your calendar. We work all this week, and the kids are in school all of next week, Monday through Friday, all the way to December 23rd on a Friday. So kids are excited, and not giving any hints to what happened last year, when you might have given us the 23rd off, but the kids, especially the kids, but...
She was having the joy of having...
We're having the joy, it's just a very, you know, kids are excited, it's a long week, it's a busy month, December, lots to do. So any questions about my board report?
Questions for Mr. Lanham? Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
So we should now, we should now go back to the agenda, and board committee reports. Frank, Budget Committee, well?
The Budget Committee met, and, well, we presented the budget to the committee. They do have concerns regarding the SAU 90 budget, as all of us were there. So we're going to revisit everything on the 20th. Hopefully, those questions will be resolved, but right now, they have concerns with the increase in the budget. So we'll address that on December 20th.
Okay, so we have a meeting on December 20th with the Budget Committee. There's going to be a public hearing on the budget Thursday, January 12th, and then we're going to have the deliberative session, that's on Monday, February 6th.
Meeting in January 12th is being held at the Slaughter's.
Correct. Thank you. Amber, can we get those dates on the website? The meeting dates?
I will have an email that will go out for the website, and Facebook, and in the newspaper, too.
Okay. The sooner we can get those up, the better, I think. Buildings and facilities, Andrea? Nothing? Curriculum, Andrea, Wendy?
Just, well, I, I want to give a shout-out again to Mr. Lanham, because I know the science of reading you're working with, trying to encompass that philosophy that's in the science of reading, continuing to work on scope and sequence, and I know the other schools are doing the same thing. I was interested in this ETRS, Language Essentials for Teachers, of reading and spelling, and Big Dipper, so it looks like you're looking at a lot of different programs, and a lot of different ideas, to try to help, help our students with their language arts skills and reading. I know that in, in the other schools, the ELA teams are working with demonstrated success also, and next month, our math teams are going to be working as well, to do that vertical and horizontal review, and update units of instruction, and the content, and materials that we needed. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done, but we are addressing it, we are going at it, we are, just takes time, and if anyone else is like me, I have zero patience, and it's like, okay, this needed to happen yesterday, but it is happening.
School Boards Association, nothing? Policy?
We have all kinds of stuff to go over tonight.
Ginny and, and Wendy, yeah, I saw a lot, there's a lot in our packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll get to those.
Professional Development, Ginny, anything?
No.
Okay. PTA, Wendy?
I've got a few things with the PTA. Number one is the Reflections Display is up at the library, so if you'd like to come and see some of the great art that our students have created and submitted, that's going to be up in the Lane Room, which is in the basement of the library for the whole month of December. Also, they have the Santa's Whimsical Wonderful Sunday that's coming up. That'll be the 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:45 a.m., and that's at the Wim Craft Ruhrian Pub. And essentially, this is going to be a, a Santa photo event, and then there'll be some, some snacks and treats and stuff for the kids while they're there. They did finish up the, the Poinsettia Sale, just finished, and they delivered all those a couple of days ago, and they have lots of fun stuff coming up for the year.
Thank you. Any questions for Wendy? Okay. Rec Department?
So Rec did not meet last month, but I do know that they had a fantastic time at the tree lighting here a week or so ago, and had a great float in the parade with the library. So they've got, got lots going on, and I think they're still waiting to get, to get their building kind of up and going, and as soon as that's all complete, they'll have an open house for the public to go in and look at the new building. Have they moved over there?
You know, I don't know. I, I saw Renee, but I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it, because we didn't have the meeting. So I don't believe so, I don't think they've gotten their occupancy permit yet.
There's a link, Frank, anything?
Nothing.
Steering Committee?
Nothing.
No? And Master Plan?
The Master Plan did meet. There is a website that has all the particulars regarding the Master Plan for Hampton. They'll be having a meeting next week to finalize everything, and then I think there's going to be a presentation sometime in January on that. But I would urge every individual in town to take a look at the Master Plan as it sits on the website, town website.
Town website, right. Wellness Committee, Andrea? Do we have an unwellness happening right now?
There are about 100 students that are out sick with, they're talking about a, they're talking about a number of things. There are probably 10 documented cases, cases of influenza, probably more than, not everybody's going, actually being tested, but there are 100 students that are out, district-wide, 106 to be exact, and just that the nurses are talking about it in terms of reminding families that to please, if your child is sick, to please stay home, to wash their hands. If they have a fever, they need to be fever-free for 24 hours in order to come back into the school, and that we are just trying to keep the people that are here in school healthy. I think this is happening around, right around the nation. I did hear about schools in Maine that were concerned about meeting the attendance rate. I think they, too, are closing. I mean, it's not, it's not unique to Hampton, it's not unique to New Hampshire. I think it's just coming off of everyone who's been masked for the last two-plus years, going into the cold and flu season. I think some people were vaccinated out, whatever the reason might be. Just trying to encourage healthy habits, so that we can keep everyone's healthy and safe. So that's all. I think that, just wash your hands, and if, if you're sick, stay home, and there is always the option of wearing a mask, and that's optional, if, if people choose to do that as well. If they feel safer with holidays coming up, that might not be a bad thing.
Thank you.
People's choice.
Mr. Sadler, Marston School?
Hi. So you have my report, but this on, it's quiet. Just a few things. Our Land to Hand Food Drive ends this week on Friday, December 16th, so students can still bring in items for that. Emily Fixler is helping to coordinate that, and everything we collect goes right back to local Hampton families, which is awesome every year, and helps kind of offset not only a holiday meal, but the entire holiday break for families, because it's a long stretch for students who aren't coming to school, and are usually, you know, kind of counting on that breakfast or lunch that the school provides, so I'm just trying to support families however we can with that. So consider donating, please. A couple other things. Our ski club registration online is due by December 19th, so for families that attended the mandatory information night, you can still go online and, and make sure registration's all set. On December 20th, we'll be having our Grade 5 performance here at Hampton Academy. The last time we did a performance here was right before school shut down, so we're excited to finally get the kids back in here. We're going to bring the whole school over that morning for our dress rehearsal in the actual auditorium, and Mr. Carlson's been working with some student groups to bring them over to do tech crew with the Technology Department here, and give other opportunities for students who don't like to perform. But it's just great that we get to utilize this beautiful space that the community let us, you know, build. And the last thing I'll just encourage people to do is keep checking out our website and our Facebook page. We put a lot of updated information on there. Obviously, our newsletter comes out at the beginning of the month, but if you want to stay up to date on what's going on, and a day-to-day or week-to-week happening, and if you want to see pictures of your students, if you've allowed us to post them, we try to put up student learning experiences often as we can, so I would just encourage people to check it out and see what's kind of going on within the schools. Other than that, I'm open to questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
All right, well, happy holidays, thank you.
Happy holidays, Nate.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You read through my board packet. Things I'd like to add, just really reemphasize the appreciation for people coming in, for talking to our kids during Red Ribbon Week, also coming in and speaking to grade levels about Veterans Day. Lot of people coming in, giving their time, just to spend times with, spend time with students, and really giving them their pers-... and really giving them their perspective on their experiences goes a long way. We had our play on Friday and Saturday, Frosty. Lot of fun, real short play, but still, kids had a great time. A lot of thanks to Ms. Clark for putting it together. And great turnout for both. We had our band concert last night, went really, really well. Auditorium was filled so much that when the sixth graders finished, there was no place for them to come back and sit down. So they had to stand on the sides and watch the seventh and eighth grade. So, but it's always great to have kids mentoring, you know? And tomorrow night is our chorus concert. So 7:00 auditorium, come over, watch our kids perform. There's a lot of talent, so. I did just get an email shortly before I came up. We applied for a Unified Basketball Grant and it has been awarded. So I'll have, give you more updates on that because I'm working with Dr. Costa and Dr. DeSylven Napton on writing some title for grants for the personnel to help run those teams or team.
Can you get any helpers from the high school?
We actually have students who, Guidance has already picked out kids who go up to our experiential program and help out on a weekly basis. So I'd like to start with our own kids and then-
That's fine. I just didn't know if you had-
Yeah, I got a feeling that as soon as we throw out a net, we'll-
They have a really great program going up there, so.
Yep.
That's awesome. That's wonderful.
Yes.
I had a quick question for you. Can students be in both band and chorus, or do they have to choose one or the other? It was a question, as I sat and watched the concert last night, I was just wondering.
Because we run an A-Day and a B-Day schedule, I believe that they can be in both.
Really?
I have to check that because then you're talking about band, one day, chorus. And then if they take a language, we have to make sure that they have PE and health. So I can look into that, but-
Just wondering.
The way that we have things set up, I believe that it can be done.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hawkins? We'll have him back up to be talking about field trips.
Do you want me to go sit down or you want me to stay here?
Why don't you go ahead and sit down, Ken, and we'll bring you back up. Dr. DeSylven Napton?
Evening.
Good evening.
You do have my report. Our numbers are holding steady across the board, so far, so good. You did read that we are starting with a new transportation company just for special education called Any Events. And we are switching over in January. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. We did go through the whole RFP process and was very long and involved. And they are from, I think they're out of Rochester or Dover, yeah. Yes, so that's very exciting for us. The Preschool Task Force, I'll be reporting in a little bit about that. It is up and running and going well. And we were going to change over our files. It might not seem like a big deal, but we want to be a little more organized in our special education filing system. So we're changing all of our special ed files over to three-ring binders. It's going to be a process, but we'll work on it between now and the end of the school year. Right now, that's all I have. I'm open for questions.
You, Frank?
You put in your report the January 9, 2017 letter?
Yes, that's on the preschool-
From the Department of Education. You want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Do you want me to talk about the preschool update now or, because that's part of the preschool?
Why don't we hold, why don't we hold off on that?
Okay. I'll talk about it at the next, next time I'm up here.
And did you have a response to Mrs. O'Connor? Off the top of your head?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming. Thank you for being such a wonderful advocate for your children. I love it when the students of parents, of students with special needs, advocate for their kids. I will say that our case managers are working, as Mrs. O'Connor had said, very diligently. And we do provide a wide range of services. We do our very, very best to provide our students with a really quality special education program. And we do our very best to not miss services, as Ms. Holbrook has mentioned. And that's really important. When a student is scheduled to have, you know, services four or five days a week, we need to make sure they get their services four or five days a week. So again, all I can say is we will take the feedback. We will, I will listen and we will make changes as necessary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Levine?
So we've been really busy in our department with the report cards for all three schools, getting those set up, organized, working with teachers across the district, making sure everybody's getting all the information in there in the right way. It is a new system, so we've been really working at all three schools to make sure we're providing teachers with the best support. We are also doing a ton of updates. We're always updating everything, whether it's the website. Mariah and I worked on updating all the budget stuff, which we'll go over later. We take pictures, constantly updating all the photos for all the schools. We've been working with the leadership team to make sure that they're updating their website for each of their buildings with upcoming events and newsletters and all of those things. We also have a ton of repairs in the office that we're working on for Chromebooks and just providing teachers support with ongoing technology needs that they need throughout the, out the district.
Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Levine? Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Mr. Lassard? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well.
Anything pressing for us?
No, I think everything's pretty good right now, other than we are looking for a full-time evening custodian on the second shift. So if anybody's out there looking for some good, honest work, we have an opening here at Hampton School District. Application can be found at the SAU office.
What time is second shift?
Second shift is either 2:00 or 3:00, 2:00 to 10:00 or 3:00 to 11:00.
It's their choice?
No, it depends which building they're going to be assigned to. Just like, you know, one building starts earlier than the other.
Okay.
It's the same as that. Last time I was here, I spoke about lightings. And we're having a problem with the lightings. And the manufacturer has harvested 20% of the lights to bring them back to study the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Lassard. We'll see you on the 20th?
Budget? Probably not, but anyways, thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Oh, you're going to be away.
Yep.
Mary, anything? Any announcements for parents? Okay. That works for me. Ginny, Ginny has a question, I think.
Did I go, Amber? How many, what percentage of children took breakfast when we had free and reduced? I mean, when we had free-
When we were free, our percentage was, gosh, at least 50% each school. You know, so now we're back down, we're down to about 10%. But when it was free, we, 50, maybe more, 75, almost 200 kids per school were eating with us, eating with us.
And now it's gone down to 10%?
Yeah, you know, we're about 35, 40 kids here, 55, 65 at Marston, and about 40 at Center. So it's gone down a lot.
And our price has gone up a little bit?
Yeah, we're $1.60. I mean, you know, you get a nice breakfast sandwich, a fruit, a milk, all that for $1.60. And reduced kids are free, but paying kids $1.60 for a nice hot breakfast.
So if someone didn't sign up for free and reduced, they could still do that?
Absolutely. Every day of the year, yes.
Who do they have to see you?
They can see me. The front office has applications. There's applications online. They can apply online, so very private. Yeah, so online is the way to go. But if you don't, we have applications in every front office.
And it's all confidential?
All confidential. All confidential, so.
Any other questions for Mary? Frank?
Yeah. This did come up at the budget meeting, but when the federal governments subsidize breakfast and lunch, you had an outpour of people participating. Has that been impacted at all since they've reduced the-
100%. I mean, uh-
Well, they've cut back on that.
They, they cut back. They cut back. And so have our, our numbers. So participation is back down. So we were going for 800 lunches a day, 750. Now we're possibly, maybe 585 through the district. Huge, huge difference.
And what about breakfast?
You know, the same. The breakfast, we were, again, like 85% participation when it was free. So now we're down, you know? We're down, so.
Okay.
Have teachers or staff reported children that have come in without breakfast from home and they haven't been eating at school either?
If, they have not reported it to me.
Okay.
Usually maybe a counselor. And then Amy will, counselor will come and get in touch with me. But, but any child that comes down, we feed them. We feed them, so.
It's just a remarkable difference between what used to be free-
Huge. And I thought maybe we would keep more than we, more participation, you know, than, than, but it's back to... It's tough out there because everything else went up.
Exactly.
You know, you're getting hit with electrical, you know, gas, electric, food, you know, everything. So when you're trying to cut corners, you're making lunches for your children. But for $3.10, two fruits, two vegetables, milk, grain, and a protein, $3.10.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, anybody else have anything for her? Thank you.
Thank you. And happy holidays, happy vacation.
You, too.
See you, Jen.
Dr. Costa?
Okay. Absolutely. Are we all set with the $750 in your report, Mr. Hawkins? Are we all set? Do we need to, we're good with that? There was a $750 check that we need to accept? Yes, so I'd like to have permission to accept $750 from Ardent Concepts for their donation to our Thanksgiving Food Drive.
Moved, Andrea, seconded Ginny. Discussion, none. All those in favor? Andrea? 5-0.
Okay, and there was also a donation check for STEAM for $3,200. That was for, I believe it's for Center School? No? Mars? Do you know?
It was for Center School.
It is for Center School, yeah.
LJ's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a, there is. Okay.
How much is that for?
It's for $3,200. That's going to teach STEAM.
So we need to accept that, right?
Yes.
Correct. It is a donation. That's correct.
Moved, Wendy?
Yes.
Moved, Wendy. Seconded Frank. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you to those generous donations for the Lend a Hand food baskets. And obviously for STEAM, that's going to benefit all of our students and families. So just a couple of highlights on my, my report. Obviously, we all know that report cards came out on Monday. So parents have had an opportunity to go into the ALMA, which is our new online student information system to review report cards. And if they're having any problems at all, Tim Smith is our data coordinator. They're welcome to reach out to Tim Smith. He's at tsmith@saun90.org if they need assistance. Also, I know that we had report cards back a few weeks ago, but we encourage parents at any time at all to please reach out to us if they want to have a conversation about their children, their progress, or any part of their program. And we're happy to do that. So please keep that in mind. As, as you've heard, Emily Buckin, Emily Fixler is very busy, as we know, preparing for the holidays. There's lots of collections going on in the schools. We appreciate everyone who has assisted with those donations. That will help to make everyone's holiday a happy one. So special thanks to all of our community partnerships. I wanted to let you know that last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the State Board of Education meeting along with Meredith Nado from SAU 21. We had a great opportunity to speak with the State Board and to share some of the great things that are happening in our district. Also, at that time, we did talk specifically about the Ed 306 Minimum Standards and just our request to continue to be in the loop of those conversations. For anyone who is not aware, I encourage you to become aware of those minimum standards is because those are what drive what we teach in our schools. So it's really important to make sure that we are aware of what's going on with those. We were going to meet with some of our legislatives this Thursday evening, but as we know, due to attendance and things going on, we have decided SU 21 and SAU 90 to move that into January. So we are in the process right now of figuring out a day that's going to work. We are currently working with Hampton Police and Hampton Fire on securing an overflow emergency evacuation shelter or reunification site. We are looking to have that at the rim. We have developed an MOU with our Hampton Police, SU 21, that will help us should we need a space. They are willing to be that space for us. So we had a nice conversation with them. And I was really pleased that Chief Hobbs was able to do that as one of his final tasks, as this Friday is going to be his last day. It's always been a pleasure to work with Chief Hobbs. And we look forward to, obviously, working with the new deputy chief, Alex Reno. So we're excited about that. As I talk about the clean and healthy and physically and emotionally safety of our learning environments, we talked a little bit about, we are officially in cold and flu season. So we just ask everyone to be mindful of making sure if your child is sick or if you are sick, staff and others, please remember to stay home, wash your hands. And remember, you need to be fever-free. We're trying to keep the buildings as healthy and safe as we can, keeping in mind that there's a lot of us, so we're doing the best we can. You notice that we do have a team from Marston School that is working with the New Hampshire Department of Education on their multi-tiered systems of support for behavioral health and wellness. So we're pleased to see the schools participating in some of that state training that is being offered to us. The purpose of the work is to develop, and really, we have a system, but we're looking at refining our system of care that looks at student wellness, is community-driven, trauma-responsive, honors youth voice and family engagements, and values equity and cultural competence. And as I said, otherwise, Mr. Lassard and I were notified that our district was awarded a security grant that will support and fund the airlock for SAU 90. That was $75,000, so we're really pleased with that. And then we are going to talk about literacy in just a bit. But just to let you know, representatives from each of our schools are meeting to identify those programs, materials, and practices that support the delivery of our curriculum. And we'll talk about that. And on January 11th, we're going to dive a little bit deeper into mathematics and just doing an in-depth longitudinal data dive to evaluate the areas of strength and weakness. of strength and weakness, weaknesses, as it relates to gaps in student achievement. I know that's something that the middle school has been working on, something we've been mindful of, given some of the learning losses that have happened in the last couple of years. But more importantly, looking at the curriculum and identifying those areas of what it is we want students to know and be able to do by the end of each grade level. And then I would remind you that tonight, there is an event that's happening that Hampton PTA is working in collaboration with New Hampshire Listens around issues of equity. Tonight's evening is titled Bridges and Doors: So Can Our Friendships? The purpose of tonight's event is to practice sticking with tough conversations in advance of the upcoming holiday season. So we're excited that that's going on today. Other than that, we are, we are just grateful that our schools are open, that we have these wonderful holiday concerts and plays. As all of our principals have shared with you, there are a number of events that are going on that have started last Friday. We had one Monday night. We'll have one Wednesday night, and we'll have one next Tuesday night. So lots of things happening that is bringing our schools and communities together in celebration of the season. So we are just delighted with that. And I've received so many positive comments and compliments on the fact that we have, the arts are alive and well in our school, and we have music and song and celebration and the festivity of the season. So thanks to everyone who's come out to support our programs, and special thanks to all of our staff that put those together. And other than that, just a happy, healthy holiday to everybody in our community, from the district to our families at home.
Any questions for Dr. Costa? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, Rotary Student of the Month?
Before Ken begins, just come on up because it's going to be in, I'm just going to kind of preface where this is. So a new policy was passed with the State Board, School Boards Association, that all schools with a high school are asking that there be a student representative on the school board. And we, as an organization, were talking about, what about K-8 districts? And they said, we don't, we don't apply. But we also think it's important that how is it that we can continue to highlight our students and the work that we do. And one of the things that Principal Hawkins has brought to our attention is he has been attending the monthly Rotary meetings, and they have now come up with a program for Student of the Month. And so as we were talking at the policy meeting, we thought this might be an opportunity to bring a Student of the Month, to recognize the student, but also to have them have a piece in our monthly meetings. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Principal Hawkins.
Great. Yeah, one of the things that we started off this year with was we have five different teams of teachers within the school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, along with our IAs, so chorus band, music, language. So each of these groups selects students. So we select eight students per month, each of which is coming from, you know, the IAs, I believe, select one from each grade level because they see everybody. And it's really about those kids that really stand out, just going above and beyond sometimes, you know, as we go through the year, showing like a vast improvement, either in, you know, their work ethic or, you know, really striving to hit respect, responsibility, you know, taking things on themselves, perseverance. So we talked to the Rotary, and what I do is the first Thursday of the month, I sit down with my Ms. Hughes and Ms. Tomborelli and Ms. Bowen and Ms. Kaiser's in on it, and the, just a smaller group of people. And we go through the list of students that we get, and we select one that has really, that we recognize as someone who has really risen to the top. So at this point, we have Student of the Month for September that we brought forward to the Rotary Club in the second week of October. And so that student went over with their parents, had breakfast, and the, I think it was Ms. Bowen went over, and she read through the blurb of what teachers are reflecting about that student. In November, second week in November, Ms. McNichol went over because it was her student that, you know, really impacts so much, you know, especially for her with Tech Club and Shark News and things like that. So she went over and presented and sat with the parents. And so unfortunately, December, the Rotary Club only had one meeting at the beginning of the month. We have our nominees, our eight nominees, and we're going to be going through them and notifying them about them being the Student of the Month for November. And then we'll get another list together for December, and we'll celebrate both of those groups of students. Second week in January at the Rotary Club, they also have, have a gift for the students. Not only the, you know, a great breakfast, if you haven't gone over, it's, it's a lot of fun, but also another gift just that they pulled together. So it's a great program. I wanted to bring the students to this meeting to introduce you, but I looked at what we're doing this week, and, you know, we're talking about the kids who really rise above and they're in band and chorus or running the sound booth for the band and chorus concert. So it's a busy week for them, so I thought talk to you and maybe we can find a good time to bring them all, bring them all in.
We'll get them in here.
At some point.
Any questions about Rotary? Okay. We might as well keep you up here if you're ready.
Hundred percent.
Update on field trips at Hampton Academy?
Dr. Costa's handing out a packet for those of you who may not have gotten it.
Can I ask off the top of your head, ballpark, it doesn't need to be exact, how many eighth graders are there?
124.
124. I could have added those first two numbers together, and I would have found that out.
It, it's, and it does change from time to time.
Okay.
So what I did was I gave you a breakdown of, first, the, really the fundraisers that we're doing, Cash Raffle, Los Cuntaros, the Yeti Cooler, and then some other ones that we have lined up for future events. At the bottom of it, you can see a monetary breakdown. Right now, we have 104 students signed up for the trip. We went through the list of the 20 students that aren't going and contacted parents, one by one, guidance counselors, Ms. Hughes. So, and for various reasons, they've decided that either they talk to their student and the student says they don't want to go, or, you know, it's a family decision for them not to go. You know, DC is a long way away, and, you know, we brought up the absenteeism today, and there's still a lot of things that people are concerned about. And also traveling all the way down to DC, there's some other concerns. So various reasons. I have, I can share them with you at some other point if you'd like. But so we had about 19 students come to us and for various levels of need. Some were talking the whole trip. Some were talking about just, you know, support after, after we get done doing raffles and fundraisers and everything like that. They may need, may need a little extra support. We're just in contact with them and seeing what they need. So what I did was I actually overestimated this because it's not 19 students who need the entire trip paid for. So what I did is I put down 19 students need the entire trip paid for, just trying to be conservative. We have five McKinny Vento students that will be covered. We did a cash raffle. And so the cash raffle, if you look up at the top, we sold over $12,660 worth of tickets. 2,500 of that was given in prizes. And that leaves us with around $10,160. So that's about $100. It's $97 and something cents. So I rounded it up to $100, just to make the math a little bit easier. So that will be divided equally among the 104 students. So that's that second number, the cash raffle, $1,900 subtracted from the total of 19 students that may need assistance. In our budget, we have money set aside for scholarships and families for this very reason. So I subtracted that, and the remainder is somewhere around $7,400.
That we're short right now.
After doing one fundraiser, we need to make up $7,400 for those students.
I would do another cash raffle.
We have, yeah, we have the Yeti Cooler, and that is interesting because the Yeti Cooler raffle is going to specific students. So if you sold 10 tickets, that's $100 off your overall price. I sold three Yeti raffle tickets. I can assign that to any student that I want. So Billy will get my $30. I can put it towards, and that happened a lot. There's a lot of, we'll be doing the accounting over Christmas break, and I'll have a better breakdown for you about, that bottom number is going to go down pretty quickly.
Can I ask quickly, what's the total cost per student of the trip?
The $1,400.
$1,400?
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawkins? Frank?
Do these numbers also include the dollars that are coming from the school board?
Yeah, that's the HA budget.
Okay.
Frank? Ginny?
You have 19 people that are past due in your, in your calculations. Is that the 19 that are requiring assistance, or is that in addition to the 19?
Those are the 19.
Those are the 19?
Yep. And you can see on there that if you look at the page underneath the, you can see that a lot of families, even people who asked for assistance, still put down the deposit of $230. So in reality, you could also add that money to that $7,400, you know, 230 times 19. So it's, we're moving right along.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawkins? This is good. It's short. It gives us what I think we need.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Pres, did I cut you off, Ken, by? No, you're good. Okay, sorry. Preschool update?
Alrighty. So as you know, we have a task force going to look at our preschool. And the letter that's dated June 17th, I mean, January 9, 2017, was the start of the whole process of what really got this going. And it was last year when we had a preschool situation that I had come into, and we fixed it. This letter was given to us by the people who were helping us fix this IEP issue. And what it talks about, well, first of all, it's the United States Department of Ed, the Office of Special Education, and they often put out, they call them Dear Colleague Letters. So that's what it says, Dear Colleague. And it's guidance that they're putting out for all of us to follow. It's not a law, it's just guidance. However, this discusses the LRE, the Least Restrictive Environment, for all students who are identified with special needs. So any child who's identified has to be educated in their least restrictive environment, which means we have a, I think of it as a number line, and you, when you are educated, you start off with the regular education as A and an environment, and then you go down the line to slowly restrict the environment that the child is receiving their education in. So that's why it's called least restrictive environment, because we change the environment, we make it smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, and, and more adaptable for students with special needs. So that's why it's least restrictive. So it's regular ed, and then we have resource rooms, and then we have special programs in Hampton. And then you get down to added district placement. So this was a big conversation about preschool, least restrictive environment, and the laws regarding that. So we currently in Hampton have a preschool special education program. So you think about the regular ed. So we start here with our preschool program when we really should be having a continuum of services for our preschool students. That's what this letter is saying, that it is important, even at the preschool level, for us to have a, a way to educate our preschoolers that's, that's more restrictive or least restrictive. So at this point, any child with an identification gets into our preschool, and it's just special ed. We do have some friendship students. We try to make it a little more not restrictive by adding some preschool. But the law and the, the way it's balanced out is supposed to be a 50/50 split. Fifty percent regular ed and 50% special ed is what a preschool classroom would be if it were on the continuum. And we don't have enough space to do that because we have a lot of identified kids. So that's what this letter is about. So this started the whole process of expanding our current preschool to get more unrestricted, if that makes sense. That's what this letter is all about. So now we have a task force, and we are looking at that. It's a great group of people. It's a really wide variety. We've got two board members. We have two administrators, superintendent, myself. We've got two preschool teachers. We have a parent who owns a childcare in Portsmouth. We have another parent who's a teacher, a first grade student. And then we've got a, a parent who's also part of the United Way. And then we have a consultant from the Department of Ed, and she's from the Race 2K Project. So we've got a great task force. We've got all the dates lined up. You do have the first set of minutes in your packet, and we hope to come back in August with some recommendations about what we're learning.
Page 21, if anyone has any questions. But we just have the first meeting. We've got our second meeting this Friday.
Does anybody have any questions? Ginny?
As the dinosaur of preschool... As the dinosaur of preschool in Hampton, we started out big. We all used to have parts and pieces of special ed children. And then they decided they'd bring them all together to go to center school and start a preschool program. So that eliminated them being out in other programs. So that's how that started out. And what happened was then they all came to center school. But since then, unfortunately, childcare is having a huge problem and issues. And there are not preschools and childcare centers available for many children at all. Also, I just wanted to correct that myself is not the owner of Village Preschool. It's a 501(c)(3), and I'm the director. And Shannon Trumbly is the same thing at Little Blessings. We both have 501(c)(3)'s.
Got it.
So we're both directors and have boards.
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
That's okay.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. DeSylvenapton? Thank you.
Thanks. We'll be updating you monthly.
There you go. Okay, curriculum update, language arts?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I will start, and then I will have, if principals, Tim Lannan, Nathan Sadler, and Ken Hawkins, they can go ahead and give a little bit of a school, an update. But I just want to give you an update on this. So, so last year, we began the work of looking at the Common Core state standards and trying to align scopes and sequences to ensure a vertical K eight progression. So we looked at these standards, and we were analyzing where the new learning would occur within each grade level. We will have, the goal is to have a curriculum document that shows a progression of learning targets kindergarten through grade eight. So parents can clearly see what it is that we hope to teach by the end of each grade level. Right now, each school is working in teams to review the resources and activities, to name the contents of the topics, to determine what formative and summative assessments will be used to gauge student progress towards mastery. Looking at those essential questions, we will be defining pacing and timeliness, identify what are the high priority instructional practices, K eight, highlighting what students will be able to know and do, and then aligning our power standards with reporting tools, including report cards, progress reports, and rubrics. So, schools are doing this right now in their buildings, but we will come back together to look at the alignment. So, I really appreciated the feedback that we got tonight. It's, it's always helpful when, when a parent weighs in on it. So thank you, Mrs. Holbrook, for doing that. What I want to do right now is to give the principals an opportunity to really talk about what it is that they're doing. Historically, language arts has always been an area of strength for the district. When you compare language arts to math, we were pretty good at getting about eighty percent of our students at eighty percent or higher of proficiency. We know during COVID, that, we didn't see that. But, we do have some baseline, and we do have some places to grow. We thought by starting in language arts, because it had been ten years since we looked at it, we would not be doing overhauls to our work, but rather tweaks. This is setting up a process for how we look at curriculum so that we can then look at fine tuning how we teach and how we assess, so that we can identify the areas that we really need to work on, and what gaps might be there that students are struggling with. So, we're very lucky. We have very masterful teachers and great support in our reading specialist and target assist that help us with this work. But I'm gonna pass it off to the three principals, and they can talk about, what does this work look like in each of their buildings? So that you have a sense of that.
Mine might have been the most recent, so I guess I'll go first. We met on December second, just last Friday, actually, or a week or two ago, right before the parade. A lot of our time was spent, you know, reviewing the work we had done before. As we, as we did the work at the district level that Dr. Costa spoke about, we were giving our staff updates and staff meetings, professional development, early release days. And then on October nineteenth, we all spent a majority of the time having teachers really start to take a deeper look and a closer look at all of the standards that had been, been identified in some of the curriculum documents that had been created and the maps that we started in draft form. And they were able to provide a lot of feedback after that, which was awesome, because then Demonstrated Success took some of that feedback and helped shape the work that we're going to do based on the needs that the teachers actually saw. We knew we were gonna start at this level first with admin and reading specialists, and then move it back into the trenches, so to speak, of the people that are actually delivering the curriculum in the classroom. So, we did a lot of time looking at the ICANN statements, you know, the power standards that we're gonna be using, what we're teaching students. And before we had put them into adult language, you know, what would it be for teachers? We were thinking a lot about all the new people that were in our district over the last few years. And when they walk in, do they have a clearly defined scope and sequence that shows them exactly what needs to be taught in grade three, four, five, or K one, two, or six, seven, eight, in English Language Arts? And when you're thinking about that, you have to realize that English Language Arts isn't just reading. It's also writing. It's also speaking and listening. It's also, you know, the function and form. It's the grammar. It's all the things that go into reading, writing, speaking, and listening under the Common Core standards. So now they started taking those ICANN statements and putting them into student-friendly language, because we know that by informing students about their learning goals before a lesson begins, they're more likely to be tuned in and engaged. And also, when they have a clear pathway of what they're supposed to be doing and where they're going at the end, we find it to be extremely helpful and beneficial in teaching. So, teachers spent a lot of time doing that, that morning. And they began looking at, you know, a format for the curriculum maps. You know, we have wonderful curriculum maps as they are right now, but if you looked formatting-wise, if you were a new teacher who went from third grade to fifth grade, the structure of it's very different. So we're trying to get something that if you move between any of the three schools, you would have a document that's clearly defined and clearly aligned and easy for not only teachers to use, but then eventually forward-facing documents that would be presented to the public, so they would know exactly where we're going to be doing. A lot of the work is kind of review and refinement, but we have a lot of new staff, and it has been ten years, as Dr. Costa said, so. It was great that we were able to get representatives from every grade level and have the time to put them in the same room and work on some of this stuff. We have a lot of horizontal conversations. Third grade talks to third grade all the time, fourth and fifth. It doesn't happen as often as we'd like that we get to have third, fourth, and fifth grade, plus our, our reading specialist working together to, to talk about curriculum and talk about standards. So, having that time for collaborative conversations has been extremely beneficial. So, that was what we did for the, the majority of our work. There's a lot of homework, so to speak. They're coming again on January twenty-sixth. And Andrea, you're the curriculum rep. So I'll send you our next dates in case you want to participate. I know there's January twenty-sixth and March sixteenth, that Marston will be working again with them. But we'll be doing some homework in between where teachers will have some time during their common planning time at the end of the day to start working on, you know, more in-depth analysis, refining again, and some more of the scope and sequence, and looking again harder at those standards, so that when we get to our January work, you know, it's not just December to January. There's, there's in-between things that need to happen in order to make this happen. Our goal isn't really, you know, by the end of the year, it's sort of when the work's completed, and if it happens by the end of the, that would be phenomenal. But we know it takes a lot of time to go through all of these standards, and at one point, I'm sure we'll share some of these documents with you. And if you saw how much is expected, or how much you needed to teach at a certain grade level, it could be overwhelming at first glance. But the reassuring thing for the teachers was, we've been doing this for a long time. We've always been doing this. It's just reminding us, yeah, we've been doing this. It just looked a little different in the past, but it's, it's a lot of the same of our core work that has been completed, and just how are we gonna make it a little bit better in, in aligning with our curriculum instruction and assessment, and then, of course, our new reporting system. So, that's where Marston's at right now.
Stick around and do questions at the end, once I think all three of us give a little bit of an update. Mr. Sadler said a lot of what Mr. Sadler's talking about is what Center School will be doing. A little bit of background before I get into Demonstrated Success. Center School is kind of going in through a little bit of a, a shift in the way we're teaching language arts this year. It's following the lead of the state. I don't know if you've been following the Lean into Literacy Initiative that's been put off, put on by the state, which is offering, they chose letters as a reading instruction program at no cost to us. This, if we would endure this cost, it would be overwhelming, the amount of money that would cost us to get this ninety-six hours over two years' worth of training not in school. It's strictly voluntary, and almost all of the staff, including administrators, teachers, case managers, are participating in this. I'm participating. So all taking a strong look at blending what we're doing right now through the workshop model and adding in the science of reading. In Letters, there's language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. This is New Hampshire's Department of Education's choice of how they want to start overhauling and training teachers. They, we're part of the first cohort. We were all accepted in this first cohort. I don't know of any other school in the area that has so much participation in this state initiative that's going on. So I'm very proud of the staff at Center School for taking this on. Prior to this coming out, we were waiting over the summer to see what the coursework would be by the state, as we had information. We, as a school, decided to do something called Big Dippers. And Big Dippers is kind of the same thing as Letters. It's called the short course. It's just a little bit of an introduction. We're taking on that all year in preparation for this. So it's kind of like pre-training. We're doing that through our PLC model and our team time. So we're in the middle of that right now. We're talking about it. It's self-paced. It's an online program. There's modules. We're moving through the modules. It's, it's an exceptional program. We're just at the beginning phases of this, but we're excited about that. But getting back to this, this Letters program, there are three, three types of programs. It's preschool, kindergarten, elementary, and one for administrators. So there's, we're going, we're all taking, Molly and I are going on the administrative route. Jamie's going in the preschool route, as she's a preschool coordinator and supervisor. And then there's multiple teachers taking either preschool or the early childhood education part of the Letters program. So there's a lot of shifting that's going on at Center School. We're excited. We're providing all of the resources. And we're blending this now work into what we're gonna be doing with Demonstrated Success. So it's a perfect time to tweak. Our tweak might be a little more tweaking than the other schools, but we're building foundational reading skills at Center School. It's so important that we get a firm understanding of what children need to know to decode, to encode, to read, to learn the process of reading. As we build on this work with Demonstrated Success, it's helping us planning, scoping, and sequence, and pacing. It's helping us improve our teaching. It's gonna help us improve assessing, and then it's gonna turn into an overhaul of how we're reporting out. So that report card shift, all three of us will be in line to do that within a year or two, so that our work will be reflected in the new report card system that we put out. So we're, we recognize there's work to be done, but we're getting there. We're moving in that right direction. As far as Demonstrated Success, they've started at the other schools. They're starting with us in January. We have three sessions with them in January, late February, and then into March. So we're excited to work with that. Tomorrow, we're pulling teams together all day for two hours at a time to work with Molly and myself and Martha to, to get ready for Demonstrated Success. We are discussing interdisciplinary units. We're very excited as to start to really build units, including science and social studies into our language arts. Essential questions, we're gonna start building tomorrow. We're gonna look at the resources like Lois talked about. We're gonna look at identifying evidence-based reading instruction and blending that in with our state standards. So we get a lot of preparation work to do starting tomorrow for when Karen Metzger and Demonstrated Success comes next month. Ken's gonna talk next.
Can I ask a question less to you?
Sure.
Okay. It sounds like a wonderful program.
Yep.
But why is the school board just hearing about it now and not before it was presented to teachers and parents and all of that?
I'll turn that over to Lois.
So, so basically, it is a study. So the State Department of Education.
It's voluntary, yeah.
Yep. Put out.
It's a resource, it's a course.
Somehow, I feel the school board should have known something about it.
We just signed up. We just started.
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful, but you had to know before tonight that you did what you're gonna do.
So, it's, it's professional development, and it's looking at, it's a, the state put out what they called an RFP. They were looking to develop a state way of looking at literacy. They decided to go with this Letters program. It all happened very quickly. We only found out about it in the fall. And then what they did was probably September, October, and Principal Lannan, correct me if I'm wrong, they were looking for people who would be interested in learning more about it. So what, so, we have always had a balanced literacy approach to teaching reading. Balanced literacy looks at things like phonics. Let's give, let's give the five things: vocabulary, spelling, writing.
I have no problem at all with the program.
Yep.
What I think is.
I don't think that's what Ginny's question.
My question is, why wasn't, if you guys knew about it in the fall, why are we just finding out about it in December? Because we could have had parents call us. We could have had staff talk about. We didn't know nothing.
Well, the other thing is, you're our representative talking about professional development.
Right.
This is professional development, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I didn't hear.
And you didn't know about it.
No, but, you know.
I think because it's not a district-wide initiative.
We're not, it's not a district. We, we didn't sign up as a district. Teachers are on their own.
Yeah.
But this is a program that all of your teachers are.
They just decided to all sign up for.
Couldn't you, next time, tell us?
Sure. Sure, sure.
Because, I mean, we really should know about that.
Yeah, I don't have my whole staff doing it, but, you know, I have staff doing professional development and all sorts of things that are.
It's very exciting. If we don't know about it, it's kind of blind.
It's just another way, it's a, it's another way to look at how do we teach reading. And the state has taken the stance that they would like to see schools, in addition to doing whole language, they would like to see schools also focusing on the phonics piece, which is the letters programming. So for, for, for us, it was an enhancement of what we're already doing. But, to your point, I think that, and that's probably something that we should have, it should have been in the, highlighted in the report, in our reports, right? And I, and I don't know how many, Principal Lannan, you've been how many times? Like, twice? Yep.
That's in February.
Yeah.
I put it in my board report tonight. It's in here.
Yeah, because it's only just started. So it is, it is fairly new. This is not.
I think an easy way to keep lines of communication open is I'll be happy in my report, under communication, just to put professional development and give you a snapshot of what teachers are doing right now. With the diversity of our staff, they're participating in all sorts of different things, based on their personal and professional goals, but also our district goals. But I'd be happy to just give you an overview, and then if you have questions about who's doing what, we can talk about it. Because what our phys ed teacher is doing compared to someone that's maybe more science-based is a lot different.
If your phys ed teacher's doing a whole new program, just let us know.
Oh, but it's not a program.
All right, if there's.
No, this is just a professional development opportunity that, that impacts the way we teach. It's not a canned program. It's not a system. It's not like a hardcore or a Houghton Mifflin. We're not adopting a, a reading series.
So if all the teachers are doing that.
Well, not all of them.
They're not, they're not all doing it.
Okay, so you're gonna have some doing the old way and some doing this way.
It's not a new or old. What it is, is just broadens, I'll show my notes. It gives you just a, a bigger overview into how to effectively teach. It doesn't necessarily, for some, it will change the way they're teaching, but this is the way people already are teaching. For some, it's just a reinforcement of skills. They talked about it as self-paced learning modules. It just talks about neuroscience, reading processes, instructions. It's really the science behind how kids learn to read. Would it be beneficial for everybody? But it's challenging at times to mandate everybody to attend, you know, such a, you know, a two-year, ninety-six hour. It's, it's quite an undertaking. Now, we are having everyone do the, in my school, the Dipper's courses, the mini modules, because I built that into our professional development time, our early releases, and our common planning time. But not everyone is participating in Letters, because there's just an optional offering made by the state. And so some people decided, I want to do a little more. If we find that it's robust and it's something worthwhile and beneficial, it'd be something we'd look at gearing all staff towards. But it's kind of new, and, and we haven't even been able to participate yet.
And how many staff, Principal Lannan, are participating in? How many people are participating in it?
In the volunteer after-school hours, weekends and evenings for Letters.
How many people are participating, though, in the training?
I have about eighty-five percent of my staff, a professional teaching staff, participating on their own. They're gonna get professional development hours. And so, all professional development hours, I don't report out to you. I try to give some highlights in my board report like I did, and.
Yep.
So if eighty-five percent of your teachers are.
Professional teaching staff, yeah.
Are getting these new inventive ideas or support, what's the other fifteen percent? How are they gonna hear about how they can be better teachers?
Well, we talk about it. So it's all, all that stuff, it's, it's a train-to-trainer model, so they're learning, and so they're sharing PLCs. That's what our professional learning communities are about. We talk about it. And the Dipper's program that Nathan and I talked about. talked about is that same information. It's just a shortened, highlighted version.
So are you requiring all your teachers to do the Dippers?
It's not a requirement. It's just what we're teaching. It's just what we're talking about during our professional learning meet time, when we meet once a week for 45 minutes.
Okay.
My reading specialist says this is what we're talking about today. This is what the month, this is what our month-long discussion is going to be about. And so it's presented to them. So requirement is a funny word. It's how we, we always are learning. That's what we're doing. Every day, we're learning new ways to teach reading and writing, all the time. And I just was proud of my staff for signing up for something the state is offering. I don't have the actual full numbers of who signed up.
And they don't notify us necessarily either.
They don't notify me.
It's put out to everybody.
Yeah.
So anyone who's got a certificate or a license can apply.
Okay.
So I don't, like, it's just a way of enhancing what they're doing, right? So the state has put that out there, and people have signed up independently as a way of enhancing their role.
They have. And they're on self-paced. So some of them have signed up to do it tonight. Some are going to do it over the weekend.
Yeah.
It's offered all the time. It's synchronous, asynchronous, and they sign up for sessions. And they have over two years to do it, and they're going to get a bunch of hours. And it's going to make Center School and, it's going to make Hampton teachers better teachers. So I did put it, did you get a chance to see it? It was in my board report.
Right. But we just, you know, when you see programs that we haven't even talked about, and a lot of people are doing it, it's kind of hairy for us on the school board that's supposed to know what's going on in the schools, not to know.
Yep.
It's just, I was confused. I thought, okay, this is a new curriculum. We're starting a new curriculum. Tim's explaining the new curriculum, and this is where it's coming from. And so it's just...
Yeah, it wasn't a new curriculum.
When we're not day-to-day involved, and we're not, and we're not going to be, that sometimes a lot of the jargon is a little tougher for us to understand. I now understand what you're talking about. But I think Jenny's right. I think Jenny felt like you were saying, this is our new curriculum, and this is how the teachers are learning it, and this is how it's being presented. And we were all like, wow, you're hip-deep in this, and we didn't know anything about it.
Well, that's why, that's why we, I thought it was important to do the update tonight. Because I feel like the last time we talked about language arts, Andrea, was last spring, right? So for me, I said, you know, it's December. We haven't had a meeting as a district to look at language arts, because now the work is really with the teachers, which is why I thought it was really important tonight to let you know. So the work the teachers are doing right now is to really look at their lessons and to look at how they're teaching the curriculum. The curriculum is very different from how we're teaching. The curriculum is the competencies or standards that we want to make sure that all children, right, have attained by the end of kindergarten, first, second, third, all the way up through eighth grade. The goal last year was to really to refine that curriculum, to relook at that curriculum. It had been 10 years since we had looked at that curriculum. And so we were looking at that curriculum from a high-level view as administrators. Then we needed to bring it back to the teachers and to say, does this make sense? Is this what kindergarteners, first grades are expected to know and be able to do? We got some feedback. We made some changes. And then the next question is, how? How are we delivering this curriculum? How are we teaching this curriculum? I think one of the ways is that they are being trained in this Letters program, which is a phonics program. We've always taught phonics, right? Through foundations, through other means. But you're right. This training from the state is brand-new this year.
Gotcha.
And some teachers are participating in that to broaden their understanding in terms of how they might teach phonics in a different way.
It's a refresh, a refresh, basically, of new techniques, new ideas.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So, yeah, and to deepen their understanding. Does that help?
Yeah.
And that's why I think it's important, and I'm glad you brought it up, that we need to be doing this on a more regular basis, right? So when we, because we're going to start math very shortly, it'll be very important that we continue to come to you and say, here's where we are in language arts, here's where we are with math. As we are, purpose behind all of this is to close achievement gaps and to ensure our students are making the levels and gains that we want them to make, right? This is the purpose behind the curriculum work.
Then I guess my question again would be, if we know math is our bigger problem, why didn't we start with math?
Because at the time, we hadn't looked at language arts in over 10 years. And that, to me, if kids aren't reading by the end of third grade, we know that's a huge problem. And language arts is also very much related to math, because language arts is literacy across the curriculum. It's needed for math. It's needed for social studies. It's needed for science. It's also historically our stronger, it's our stronger content area for us as a district. I thought it would be easier to do language arts first. Once we had a way of looking at language arts, we could then have a system for how we looked at mathematics.
What percentage of our students get to third grade without reading ability?
Well, I think that's a great question. And I think, you know, Mr. Sadler, or, we could talk a little bit about that, you know, how many third graders are currently not on grade level. I mean, that's a great question. And I wouldn't want to guess, but historically, we had been in that 75 to 85%. We know that with COVID, it's taken a slide. It's not as high. It might be around, I'm going to just throw out a number, like 70 to 75%.
Have achieved...
Are on grade level. Do you think that's about right, Mr. Sadler?
Current SAS data, yes, probably in the low to mid-70s, based on the presentation we did this year. That's by the end of third grade as well. There's no state metric that measures, as you know, K2. It starts in third grade with the state assessment.
How about math?
Our math? Oh, we were in, I'd have to look at our presentation, and it's around 70. I mean, we were lower in math, without a doubt. But the thing about is, our students tend to do well with like the calculations, the arithmetic. It's some of the word problems, the problem-solving, and then the written explanations, because part of SAS math is, not only did you solve the problem, how did you solve it? So if our kids struggle with reading and writing, they unfortunately struggle in math, and they struggle expressing themselves. And a big part of the math assessment is explaining your answers and then showing what you know and how you've done so. So they are pretty intertwined and intermarried, but yeah.
And that was our problem in the science, too.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
The math.
And the science, the science...
The constructive responses, correct.
Yeah. The old kneecap science, not to get off track, but was a hands-on science exploration. It's more of a reading assessment about science skills.
So if you strengthen the language arts, the reading, the writing, the speaking and listening, you really are strengthening all of your content areas, which is why we chose to start with language arts.
Okay.
To Hawkins?
I think everything's been said, but...
I think more than everything has been said.
We did have our meeting with Demonstrated Success, and again, just went over the large span curriculum maps that we built at the district level, honed in on the six, seven, and eight standards, and then looked at some ICANN statements, really identified the priority standards. And after that day, the next thing that we're going to be moving towards is the, really looking at sixth grade, what are kids learning? What are the materials we're using? What are the projects we're doing? To be able to hit those standards as we go through. And then my, the next steps that you really start to dig into is common assessments. We have the SAS. We have STAR. If we have two language arts teachers in seventh grade, and they're doing the same standards, they should have common assessments that they can sit and give kids, and then sit back down later on during a CPT and say, how does your kids do on this? And it's a, you know, it's not a state test that they're doing. It's not a computerized test that they're doing. It's a real, you know, grittier way of polling, do kids know these standards? And it's the teachers who are working together, but you have two teachers, they're giving the same assessment across the board to all of the kids in one grade. You can really get some, I think you can really get some good data out of that. So that's what we're really, one of the things that we're really working towards.
Any other questions for Ken?
General. Well, this is, I guess I would just like to remind people, there's 24 hours in a day and there's seven days a week. And what I'm hearing is something that I just would caution, caution, that the teachers, as much as they're volunteering to do a lot of this stuff, and that's awesome. And I've been there and said, passionate about this. I want to do this. This is great. But I'll tell you, one of the reasons that a lot of people are getting out of education is because of teacher burnout. And I think we just need to keep in mind that there's a limited amount of time, and that our main focus has to be with our kids, again, doing the very best we know how. But I just caution, I guess, I'm just a little concerned that what I heard is a lot, a lot. And I just don't want us to get overwhelmed.
I really appreciate that. I think that we talk about this as a leadership team a lot, in the sense that we are not putting a timeline on our curriculum renewal. We're going to do what it takes to do a good job to have a curriculum document that we feel we will be proud of, that represents the work that we do, and that we will also address the math concerns that we all have. But at the same time, you're absolutely right. We would, we've all decided we would rather do a better, thorough, great job than do so many things that nothing gets done well. So I really appreciate that comment, and I think we all share that sentiment. So thank you.
Ken, just a comment. I used to be the chairperson of the SAU 21, excuse me, and including SAU 90, Language Arts Vertical Team. And we used to meet once a month, anyway. I think it was for a whole day. And some of the things that we did were developing power standards, common assessments, and so on and so forth. The idea was that all of the sending schools, these kids are going to end up at Winnicottson. They ought to have some common knowledge and background, et cetera. So my question is, and you don't have to answer it, but is there anything like that still going on?
We went up on, we sent our language arts teachers to the high school on, I think it was the 18th.
It was the early release in October.
Yeah. They went up later on. They went up and they met with teachers up there. So we're definitely looking at that. We're trying to build those bridges for programming and curriculum at the same time.
Trust me, it takes more than two hours after school.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Takes more than the half a day. It needs to be coordinated, and it needs to be ongoing. So put that on your agendas, because it was valuable.
Yeah. Transition, the transition is, we have to get our kids ready, you know, whether it's a different grading system, or if it's the expectations at the high school, we need to, that's part of our job.
Thank you, Ken.
And to that end, I think that's why we created a calendar that does align with SAU 21, so that those conversations can happen on those release days, so that work can continue. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Moving on. Mariah?
Hello. So you saw my numbers for November. Right now, we're cleaning up all of the invoicing and payroll for all of 2022, because tax season is coming quickly, and we will be working on all tax reports. I have ESAR grant report due January 16th, but has been updated. All ESAR information on our website. And Amber will go through that in a second. You already spoke for me on the public hearings, the times and dates. Just remember, the public hearing was moved to the town hall. I originally had it here, but that will be changed. And these dates will be up on the website, Facebook, and in the newspaper. I've worked with Amber, who did a great job of getting all of budget information organized. And she's going to just help, she's going to plug her computer in for me and walk you through how to find this information on our website. I think it's important, so that people have the opportunity to look at it, dig through what they need for information. I think they forget that it's there sometimes. And also, feel free to email me with any questions, or if you're missing anything, or if you want more in-depth answers. And my email is mcurtis, M-C-U-R-T-I-S, at saun90.org.
So this is the district website. And if you go underneath Operations, and then you scroll down to this Business Office, and you click right here, it says Voting Information and Annual Report. And so what we've done is, we've put the last three years' information up, so including this year. So if it is not in blue, it means something isn't finalized yet, so it's not up on the website. But we thought we'd like to be, you know, more transparent to everybody, so you can see the numbers from 2021, 22, 22, 23, and then this year's going into the next budget cycle, 23, 24. So everything that we talk about is in here. Mariah and I are still working on getting a couple of other things, audit breakdowns and things like that. But everything else is up here. Click on it, and you can get all the information that you need.
What's the final date for people to get in Warren articles?
That, I don't have my calendar. But I have to have them posted before the January 12th meeting.
Okay. Because, I mean, we don't usually get them for the school, but if someone has an idea and gets 25...
Yes, I'll have them posted. I usually post them at the library, at schools. Last I did Winnicottson also. It will be posted again up here. It is up here now. It'll be posted up here with signatures. And I will let everybody know on that also. It has to be, we have to finish having approval next Tuesday, before I can get that organized.
Thank you, Mariah. We have some policies for second read. Okay. We have BE, I'm going to do them one at a time. B-E-D-H. Anyone want to make a motion to approve that? Frank? Seconded. Andrea? Discussion. All in favor? 5-0-0. It passes. We have E, is it B-B-D?
Right.
Indoor air quality. This is a second read. Someone want to move that? Moved, Frank? Seconded, Ginny? Discussion. All those in favor? That's 5-0-0. Motion carries. We have Data Records, Retention, and Instruction. Second read, that's E-H-B. Moved, Wendy? Moved, Wendy? Seconded, Frank? Discussion. All in favor? 5-0. We have second read on Local Records Retention Schedule. Say that three times fast. E-H-B-R. Moved, Frank? Seconded, Andrea? Discussion. All those in favor? 5-0-0. The motion carries. We have, I'm just doing the second reads first. We have I-H-B-A-A, Evaluation Requirements for Children with Specific Learning Disabilities. Someone want to move that? Ginny? Seconded, Andrea? Discussion. All those in favor? 5-0-0. I believe the rest of them are all first reads. We have the F-F, which is Naming Rights. We have, sorry. We have, sorry. That F.F., by the way, has new language in it, and it's lengthy, it's eight pages.
It is, just as a heads up, we essentially took the, sorry, we took our original policy, and we basically combined it with the new language from the state School Board Association. We had a lot of unique language in ours that we kept, because we thought it was useful.
So look that over before our January meeting. We have, I'm going to find it, make sure I read the right letter, J.I.C.A., Student Dress Code. This is a first read.
Our dress code was?
Was woefully out of date.
Yep.
Right. So, that's a first read. Do we have to vote on each one of these as a first read?
No, you can just accept them as a first read.
We'll accept them all, and then?
Problem with, or we have an issue, we just let you know.
Yeah. Wendy, Lois.
We're happy to. And, yep, and Ginny too. Yep.
So, that's J.I.C.A., I'm sorry. We have one here, how to order here. Actually, I think it's on the back.
Yeah.
On the back page of one of the J.I.C.A.s. It's J.J.C., Eligibility for Student, for School Athletics.
J.J.I.C.
J.J.I.C., I'm sorry.
And we worked with Principal Ken Hawkins on this one, for his input. So you can see, we put in some language that was appropriate to our middle school, so I think it. Might want to look and see if you have questions on that one.
I know I do, but I will, I'll get in touch with you.
Perfect.
Yeah. Then we have J.J.J., which is Access to Public School Programs by Non-Public Charter School and Home Educated Pupils. It's four pages. And then we have G.B.C.D., and Lois gave us, is this a different G.B.C.D. than the one we had in our packet?
It might be. The reason why, you had actually approved this for second read in October, and there's been a lot of conversation regarding this policy in particular. So what this policy now requires is that any, and the word is designated volunteer, would need to have a fingerprinting and background check before they can come into the schools. We've noticed, as we looked at this, there was something that, when I called the School Boards Association, there's something that's called a carve-out, that we should be adding to our policy. So, we brought this back up this month for the carve-out, and the carve-out is, we have a number of students that come over from Winnicottet High School to do their extended learning opportunities, or ELOs under Donna Kutcher, and just students that help out. The issue you have is, is that because it doesn't say they have to be over 18 years of age, believe it or not, it is recommended that that go into the policy. So we would like to have that under Number 7, we'd like to put the carve-out, and it would say, and it would be A, is over 18 years of age, and, and we would have those other qualifiers in there. One of the other conversation pieces we had was, how do you define letter A, which is, comes in direct contact with students on a predictable basis? That seems to be causing some conversations around the state. In fact, we're going to talk about it on Thursday with the Southeasters, because the question begs, for example, if you have, let's say, a parent coming in for Read Across America, do, are they required to be fingerprinted for that event? Predictable basis, if you look it up, it basically says, anything that's pre-arranged, or anything that's done in advance. When, in fact, you know that they're not meeting regularly with students, they're not meeting one-on-one with students, they're not being left alone with students, we're just trying to work through that, so.
So let me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me, so G.B.C.D.
Correct.
Which we have here.
Yep.
Without the red insertions and so on and so forth. We have already approved, so it is in effect right now.
Right.
And you're going to go to your principal's meeting.
Yep.
And probably get an update on this.
Right.
And we will revisit it.
Yep, but if we could just have that it's over 18, otherwise, what we'll have to do is, it's going to hold up all of those students that are trying to do ELOs. If that's okay, if we can add that carve-out?
So we want to amend our current G.B.C.D.
Correct.
With that red language there?
Sort of. We want to move, the only thing is, we do want to take, so, Section 7, Number E.
Yep.
Should instead be A. It needs to be at the beginning, and it needs to have the word "and" at the middle of the sentence, at the end of the sentence.
Okay. So there'd be some very minor changes, but important ones.
Yeah, right.
So does everybody have the gist of what we're doing?
And understand why?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, can we get a motion to amend our current G.B.C.D.? Frank?
I'll make the motion to amend our current policy.
Okay. As stated by the superintendent?
Please, thank you.
Second, Wendy? Discussion? All those in favor? So, we won't have to be looking at this again. Okay.
So Lois, that means as of today, anybody that volunteers in a classroom in any capacity?
No. If you, again, A says, comes in on a predictable basis. We want to look at language as what determines a predictable basis. So, for example, because when they do this, it costs them 21, 25 to do it, and they only need to do it once, and then once they do it, they are covered, right? For their entire time, their children or child is in the district, which is a wonderful thing. The issue lies with, do we want to put some language around that predictable basis? And I would like to hear what Diana Fenton, who is the attorney at the Department of Ed, is coming down to talk about that, and I want to hear what she has to say before I weigh in on it. The most important thing is, is that we just want to make sure that all of our children are not at risk, right, or not put in a situation. And I think it's going to prompt conversations with principals, with staff, and everything else, because this now is a policy, but it's got some law behind it. So it's very clear, we're always going to be responsible for this anyways, but we have to think about, do we want every person who comes in our building, regardless if it's for Read Across America, school store, when they're not working with kids, really, right, they're overseeing a school store, do we want them to be fingerprinted? And I think it's a question that, you can weigh in on it, but I also want to hear what the attorney at the Department of Ed has to say about it. So I don't know if you want to weigh in on it, or you'd rather wait and hear what they have to say about it.
I think we should wait and get some guidance from them.
Yeah. I think so too. And right now, we are prioritizing, because it's been in my newsletter the last two Fridays, and Kathy Tuck is getting an onslaught between, we have a field trip this Friday for fourth graders, and we also have ski clubs starting at middle school in Marston. So parents that are driving students, do they need to be fingerprinted? If they're driving only their student, maybe not, if they're only driving their students, but if they're regular chaperones, yes, they do. So we're trying to distinguish, because there are some.
This policy has been evolving a lot over the past 10 years, you know? I mean, it used to be, go ahead, get in the car, yeah, you know, and it's changed.
Yeah, because, I mean, you don't know if somebody shows up for ski.
That's right.
And sees their friend's mother, and say, all right, up with you.
Sure.
I think we'd like to have our volunteers be fingerprinted, and it's going to fall on center school primarily, when they start, and then once they do it, they'll be done. I know that, I talked with Jen McClellan, the PTA is willing to help offset some of the costs for families as well. So, and we'll put it in our welcome to our district letter, so it will just become standing practice. The issue is, is that is now.
Well, when we get legal guidance, then it makes it easier for us.
Yep.
Okay, we have some minutes, and I'm going to take them one at a time. The first one, excuse me, Tuesday, November 8th. I had it on page 96, where Mr. Lanin speaks. The first sentence says, new this year to the newsletter, that should be a capital I, so it's I'm instead of im. And on page 97, it's discussion around environmental camp. Frank says, are we going to have the same thing with the Washington trip, where we go over? I think he also said budget, where we go over budget. And I said on the bottom of page 99, on the very bottom, I said, there's no magic wand to wave to get the scores back up. This in the U.P. I just happened to notice that. And the last one is on page 101. The third, from the bottom, it said, a motion to enter non-public. I think we should put under RSA 91A32. Does anybody else have any corrections on November 8th? Andrea?
I do, on page 99. It's Barbara Garand.
Where is that?
It's right in, under.
Oh, in the, a third of the way down?
Yeah.
G.A.R.
A, am I not correct? G.A.R.A.N.D.
D.
And I just didn't know about, there's something about Knox Box.
What page?
Okay, this is fill on 99.
Oh, I see it.
We've adjusted our SRO agreement, so they've added.
KNOX.
What's a Knox Box?
It's the box that the, yeah, that the police use to get in, they've got the keys to it. And it's KNOX, isn't it? Yeah.
Oh, I just didn't know what it was.
All right.
It's their key.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, it's their access.
Does anyone else have any changes to November 8th minutes? No, okay. Motion to accept. Thank you, Frank. Seconded, Wendy. Discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0-0. The next one I think I'll do is non-public of November 8th. Non-public of November 8th. I have no changes. Anybody have any changes to those? Okay, although, a motion to accept them, Frank. Seconded, Wendy. All those in favor? Okay. 5-0-0. We have a work session of October 12th. Anybody have any changes? Okay. Someone want to make a motion for these? October 12th minutes? Andrea? Seconded. Wendy? All those in favor? Frank? Yes? 5-0-0. Okay. We have October 20th. This, yeah, this is a lengthy one. Okay. This is four pages. Anyone want to make a motion, or any changes? Frank, did you have any changes? No. Anyone have changes? Okay, motion, Frank. Seconded, Ginny. Discussion? All those in favor? Carries 5-0-0. We have October 28th, Budget Work Session. This is a lengthy one, too. Anyone have any changes?
26.
Oh, that's on, that's on 8. I had to get glasses, 26. October 26th, I really do. Anyone want to make any changes? Okay, someone want to move that? Frank? Moved, Frank. Seconded, Andrea. All those in favor? 5-0-0. Okay. We have one for November 2nd. It's two days, two pages, front and back. Anyone have any changes? Andrea?
I think under Function 2900 Benefits, I think the motion is made by Frank DeLuca, F.D.
Okay.
Yep.
I will adopt Frank anytime he would like to.
Okay. Any other changes? Although, motion, Frank. Seconded. Andrea. All those in favor? 5-0-0. We have a November 5th. Page in a little bit. Anyone have any changes? Okay, a motion? Moved, Frank. Seconded, Wendy. Discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0. Motion carries. Then we have a non-public on November 30th. Anybody have any changes to that? Okay. Motion to accept, Frank. Seconded, Andrea. All those in favor? That carries 5-0-0. Okay. I was going to ask if there was any more public comment, but the public has gone. And do we have a non-public?
No, no, I have something. I'd like to revisit at the next board meeting in January.
10th.
The policy regarding school board ethics, which was brought up, I believe, either October 12th, or I think the meeting acted at by Virginia, so.
Do we know the letter number?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the letter of the policy?
No, I don't. I don't.
I can, we'll find it for you.
Directly in front of me. But I do know that you brought it up, I believe, on the October 12th, and I'd like to go back and revisit that.
Do you want to come to the Policy Committee, so that, because that's typically what we would do, is we would?
No, I just want the policy to come up, and I just want to revisit it.
Okay.
Okay? We can do it in public session, too.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to make a change. Okay.
Want to revisit it.
All right.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to give you an offer.
We have to go into non-public?
I think we do.
Okay. Well, Frank?
Yeah, I'd like to go into non-public, because we were supposed to get an update on certifications that we discuss.
Okay, we'll do that in non-public. So I'm just guessing it's 91A:32.
That's, yep, that's the one, 91A:32.
Ginny, is yours under the same RSA?
Yep.
So we have two going on. Okay. So it's moved, Frank. Seconded, Ginny. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Ginny.
Yes.
Andrea?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
So, 5-0-0. So five, zero, zero. So we'll pause.